Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, December 19th County Commission Meeting. If you'd stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation in America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and again, welcome and Merry Christmas to everyone. I hope you have a wonderful holiday and relaxful and have time to reflect on the season. So with that, we'll start with reminding you to silence your cellphones and meeting documents are next to Commissioner Bender. If you need a listening device, Craig or Carol would be able to help you up front. With that, item number one is to consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item two is to approve the commission minutes from December 12th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any changes with that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item three, our bills to be paid at $1,060,138.60.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions?
Chairman?
Yes.
The auditor isn't here today, so I'm going to just make a couple of comments on them. One is that we have $22,000 we spent on Rodney Burgett, which it's the gift that keeps on giving to us here in Minnehaha County. There's also one bill for $204,000 for crack seal in the Highway Department and there are eight pages of mental illness bills for, I think I calculated to be 225 individual bills on mental illness, which is, and this week's bill is actually, it's I think 44 pages long, which is more than normal.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other comments about the bills? We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Reports that are filed, we have the auditor's account for the treasurer as of November 30th, the county sheriff's report for November, the county coroner report for August, and the county coroner report for September and October, and then, and the whole third quarter, I guess.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'd just like to comment on the auditor's account with the county treasurer.
Go ahead.
Which, it, the printout here shows that there's a balance of 7,800 outstanding, but I talked to them and 6,600 of it has been cleared up since this report was made. It was a snapshot at that moment and it's looking better today.
Okay. Thank you. Item five, our personnel actions. A is to consider a motion to approve the routine personnel action. Carrie?
So moved.
Is there a motion?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the routine personnel action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item B is to consider a motion to approve the proposed changes to the employee handbook. Good morning.
Good morning. Carrie Dever from Human Resources. On December 5th, I presented you with a briefing on some changes that we're proposing for our handbook. It's entirely restructured, but most of the provisions are the same or very similar. I briefed you on approximately five or six substantive changes or policy changes. Just as a reminder, we're proposing a shift differential increase for facilities and JDC staff from 40 cents to 50 cents, adding a provision to our on-call policy for IT, human services and facilities that would guarantee two hours of pay for people who are required to come back to the facility, making a small change for PTO donations so that people no longer have to be here for a year before they can donate, changing travel provisions so everybody can be paid while traveling for work-related purposes at any time, changing the employee relations and complaints procedures to have it be an open-door complaints policy instead of a formal grievance procedure. Out of all of those, there's, there's financial impact. It's below 7,000 and of that 7,000, department heads are fairly confident they can flex time to lower the impact of that cost to the county. I also want to point out that since I briefed you on December 5th, we did make a few other minor updates to the handbook. We caught that we had inadvertently left the random drug testing at 50% when it's at 25 currently. We're changing the retirement provisions to ask for four-week notice if possible. We added a clarification that lost time under workers' compensation and is in accordance with South Dakota regs and we changed out some layouts. So again, no substantive changes there, no real changes, but wanted to make you aware that there were some edits since the last time you looked at it. With that, I'm asking for your approval on December 30th, if you'd be willing to do that. What we're hoping to do is have that coincide as closely as possible with next year and start these changes at the beginning of the pay period since some of them do impact pay.
Any questions for Carrie? No questions? Thank you for your hard work.
Again.
Amazing project to have to work on.
Well, thank you. Okay. I really believe it's been valuable for both us and for Lincoln County and I just want to again, thank everybody who is involved. There's been a lot of people and a lot of department heads committed several hours over the last few months to look at this provision by provision and couldn't do it without them.
Yep. With that, is there a motion to approve?
I think she just said we were going to approve it next week? Or did you want to prove?
It's on the...
I'm hoping for your approval today to be effective on the 30th.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you. There's no applications for abatement today, no notices and requests, no planning and notices, zoning notices, or petition for compromise. Now we have an opportunity for public comment. If anyone has any comments they'd like to make on any items that are not on the agenda. Carol, are you going to talk about next week's conversation? Ask her to do that now instead of later so that we keep that in our memory bank?
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commissioned Administrative Officer. Just a reminder, we are going into the holidays and I can see by the Christmas ties that people are wearing that we're all on target for that. But just a reminder, yes, the commission does meet the Tuesday after Christmas. It's on the 26th and you will be meeting at that time. And as a reminder, for people who are preparing agenda items such as the department heads out there, we've requested that those items come in by tomorrow so that we're able to get those scheduled since we have it, since we're a day short. January 2nd will be the organizing meeting of the commission for 2018. Agenda items for those are due Wednesday, December 27th. And at that meeting, there are two things that you always do annually along with a few other things, but one is that you will establish the official newspapers for Minnehaha County at that time and you will also elect your chair and vice-chairperson for the commission for 2018.
Perfect.
Joe?
Yes.
Are we, the sculpture thing, is that during public comment now or will that be at the end?
If you would like to do that now, we can do that now.
Okay.
Perfect.
Hi, I'm John Whiteman.
You can move the microphone if you'd like, Doctor.
All right. Thank you. I was having a little trouble hearing it myself. Around 2004, I gifted a sculpture to the, to the county entitled Liberty and Lightning the World and it was installed in, at the Multicultural Center on the main floor. And since that time, in the, when everything was, was reorganized for the medical and dental clinic down there, during that period of time, it was moved into a safe place. And what I'm looking to do is to go back and rededicate the sculpture and replace the plaque to where it would be dedicated to the African refugees that we're seeing so many of down there. And I met with Carol yesterday and we thought that perhaps placing it on the outside, in a garden, outside of the, of the Multicultural Center and the building there would be a good place for it. Now that was the, the picture that you're seeing now was where it was formerly installed back in 2004 and unveiled. And it is now, it is set in sort of a, yeah, right there, in that position there. And that's a picture of it there. And what I'm proposing to do is, is to change the dedication, put a new plaque on there and, and check everything over and see if we can safely install it in a place where it would honor the, the struggle of the African refugees. So many that we're seeing down there. When I go down there, I see practically everyone that's lined up at the reception desk is of African origin. So what I'm asking the, the commission to do is, is we want to check and make sure that the gifting is, is, is complete and acceptable and then perhaps aid in, in moving the sculpture to a new permanent location or as permanent as you decide it should be. That is the, I don't have a picture of where it would be on the outside, but I have, I don't know if I have a picture of the dedication, but I'd certainly be glad to read it. The new, yes, there. The new, there, very good. The new plaque will say, "More than, more than 40 million people around the world today are internally displaced due to conflict and/or tyranny and live as refugees, risking and losing their lives and their families to find a safe place, a country to work, to raise their children and families in peace, to escape oppression, persecution, abuse, rejection, and decreasing mortality. Over one-third, some 15 million of these displaced people are on the African continent and the crisis is constantly increasing. Our country was born of such people with similar desires and dreams. We acknowledge and admire their struggle and cannot rest until they succeed in their quest for such freedom and dignity. We must constantly join their struggle for an enlightened world." And that is my request.
Thank you, Dr. Ritzman. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, it's a question. So we would probably need this to be a, a agenda item where we would take action, right?
We would and we can put that on the agenda as soon as possible. I think the other thing that crossed my mind from my city council days is that there's a joint group that has to approve plaques and whatever else. And maybe Deborah, you could help me with that as your memory is bad as mine. I hope not. Anyway, I know that because this is a joint facility, we may need to have their approval, so we'll have to have that checked out before we put it on the agenda because I know there has been controversial conversations about plaques and all that good stuff when I was on the council and I don't want to create any more hassles for you. It's a beautiful sculpture and we want to get it placed as soon as possible, but I want to make sure we do it right so we don't have to do it over, so to speak.
I recently went before the city commission and gifted another sculpture that was recently installed in the waiting room of the dental, community dental clinic down there and went through that. I do have a copy of the gifting agreement that they, that they generated for that piece of sculpture. It is in place.
Good.
Now, and, but I would like to do something similar to this to acknowledge the struggle of the people that we're helping there and there.
Well, thank you for your gift and we'll get that clarified very quickly and we'll get the, get that on the agenda so that we can confirm that we can get this done as soon as possible and we'll be in touch with you if that's okay?
Thank you. I'll communicate with Carol and give her this gift.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for coming this morning.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else have an agenda item? If not, Deborah, would you like to introduce yourself this morning or I can introduce you? You'd probably be able to do it better. As we talked last week, Mark's last meeting was last Tuesday and now we have new representation from the chamber and she's been an employee of the city and of the state and has a legal background, so we're excited to be able to have her services available. So Deborah Owen.
Commissioner Benega and other commissioners as well. Yes, Mark Lee has graduated on to other work and he will be missed by everyone. He did a great job and he's a very good friend of myself as well, but I look forward to working with you and learning about your function here and reporting, of course, in our Chamber Advocate Weekly on the work that you do here, which is so important to our city. So thank you for your public service. My background, just briefly, I worked for the city, city council for a number of years, six and a half, and then went to the state. I was the senior staff attorney for the Bureau of Human Resources for about three and a half years and was their lead lobbyist and peer. And then I worked for the Hospital Association, was also their lead lobbyist, and now I am back to Sioux Falls, so thank you.
Thanks for being here this morning and welcome.
Chairman?
Yes?
I'd just like to comment that the Chamber Advocate is probably the one journalistic endeavor that gives us the very best coverage. I mean, if you look around, what other reporters in, in their crowd, none. And so I, I have to thank the chamber for their continued interest in the public affairs that we address here.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other open, good morning, DJ.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothey, Highway Superintendent. I just wanted to take a minute to introduce Jacob Morris publicly. He's our new engineering supervisor in the Highway Department and he comes from a career over at the City of Sioux Falls Engineering Division and, and just wanted to introduce him formally and, and welcome him to the department. Today is his first day.
Welcome, Jacob, and please give us your background too. We heard part of it.
Yeah, I come from the City of Sioux Falls. I worked there for about five and a half years in the engineering, project management department, worked on roads and utilities, so looking forward to my new career starting here.
Well, welcome and we're appreciative of the fact that you would be here to support the Highway Department and with all your years of experience, you should be able to, quote, "hit the ground running," I'm guessing.
Yeah, I think so.
Yep. Perfect. Any other opportunities for comment? With that, we'll go to item 10, which is to consider a resolution to authorize the treasurer to issue a quitclaim deed on tax deed 2599, tract two, lot D, Ellison, Eastern addition to the City of Sioux Falls to an adjacent landowner and authorize the county auditor to abate all outstanding taxes, interest, and penalties. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mary Zeeb, representing the auditor's office. Bob is not in today, so I'm just standing in for him. I think you have all the information that I have been given regarding this action. What it takes is a resolution which allows the treasurer's office to issue a quitclaim deed for this property. It is something left over from tax deed. It was not sold on tax deed, it's just a small portion. And with the resolution, that allows the treasurer to issue a quitclaim deed and then we in the auditor's office abate all the taxes and fees and interest and penalty against this property and it is then, would be given and the ownership would be transferred to Chad and LeAnn Dixon, who are adjoining landowners.
Thank you, Mary. Thanks for coming. Any questions for her this morning?
I'll make a motion to approve that action and then I have a comment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments?
Mr. Chairman, this is an example of the, the small pieces of property which are created during developments and oftentimes we get them with drainage things where there's a piece of property which no one cares for, no one pays the taxes on, and we wind up owning it. I mean, it's clearly not of any interest to the railroad. It's, we're not going to build an airport there. You know, with luck, the, the neighbor who joins it will use it for a vegetable garden or something. And anyway, I just, I hate the creation of these small tracts which have no other use.
Commissioner Iger.
I'm just going to comment that the value of this land, for people who aren't reading the agenda that we have, was about $440 and the back taxes owed on it were $165. So it's not like it was a huge piece of property or a significant amount of back taxes that were not paid.
It's true. The taxes will be about $7 a year if we left this parcel as it is. I'm sure now they'll attach it to the other property and I don't know how that plays out. That's all done in equalization.
Thank you again. We have a motion and a second to approve the transfer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 11 is to authorize the chair to sign a 2018 addendum to the healthcare services agreement between the county and Armour Correctional Health Services for jail and detox. Warden Gromer.
Good morning. Jeff Gromer, I'm the warden at the jail. I am here with the yearly contract extension between Armour Correctional Healthcare and the county for the medical services at the jail. Overall, the projected cost is about a 6% increase. The management fee is the fixed portion cost of that. It's included in the memo. That's $27,903.50 a month for 2018.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Gromer? Commissioner Bender?
So, Warden, this is the, this is in accord with what was approved in the budget?
Yes.
These cost increases are already included in the budget for next year.
It's slightly different, but slightly within a couple thousand dollars. So it's fairly close with the size of the contract, a couple thousand dollars is give or take.
Any other questions?
I'm very happy to do this, but when does our contract with Armour actually end?
On the original contract written, this would be the last year of it.
Okay.
2018.
So this extends it a year?
This extends it.
Great.
Through 2018, which is what was originally included.
Any other questions? If not, is there a motion?
There is.
There is a second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract with the Armour Correctional Health Services. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item 12 is to consider a motion to reappoint the county weed and pest board members, Virginia Solheim, Rodney Vanderweelt, and Donovan Carpenter. Mr. Hammer.
Good morning. Minnehaha County Weed and Pest Supervisor, Ralph Hammer. These are very important members to the Weed and Pest Board. They are the vice chairman, the chairman, and the secretary, so I would be hurting if we lost them.
Anyone have any questions for Ralph? If not, is there a motion?
I move.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve those individuals to the Weed and Pest Board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Ralph.
Thank you.
Item 13 is to consider a resolution to set the weight load limits on the county highway bridges as recommended. DJ Boothey.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothey, Highway Superintendent. Every year about this time, I give a quick summary of our bridge weight postings on our bridge system. We've got about 197 bridges right now on our system and we completed bridge inspections of about half of those bridges in 2017. Luckily, this year, we did not have any new bridge postings from those inspections. We do need a, a new resolution passed, however, because we completed two bridge replacement projects, two construction projects to replace bridges that had previously been posted. And so the number of bridges posted on our system will be going from 27 to 25. Of those 25 bridges, two of those are on county highways and are planned on being replaced in either 2018 or 2019. And then the remaining 23 are on township secondary roads. So the resolution is, is before you and I'd request that you approve that resolution or ask any questions if, if you have any of them.
You have any questions for DJ? Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution for the weight load limits. Any other comments? All those in favor of the motions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you. Item 14 is a briefing on the rural ambulance working group for the implementation of the Fitch study. Lynn Young.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lynn Young, Emergency Management. As you know, in the spring of 2017, which seems like a long time ago, but was last spring, the county commission authorized the study of the rural ambulance system that we had. With that, we contracted with Fitch and Associates to come in and assess, excuse me, assess the system and give us their work and, or their recommendations. They provided a report to the commission in early, in the early spring. Subsequently to that, four working groups were formed centering around electronic patient care reporting, training, recruitment and retention, governance, and then we had a funding meeting, or excuse me, and then, I'm forgetting the fourth one, but it's in there somewhere, the medical board, there it is. And then just last week, we also had a funding group discussion because funding keeps rising to the top of all of the, really all four work groups. So within your packet, you should see the minutes and the attendance of all the meetings that were had, or that were out there, specifically in the electronic reporting. Once again, I briefed you a little bit on this, but both the, the state of South Dakota is moving to a new electronic patient care system. It's currently implemented within the rural area. That works along with the county and city's project to implement a new CAD system. So what we're doing is we've had the initial contacts made between the Zirker, the Zirker folks and then the ImageTrend folks. And after both systems are up and stable, then we're going to bring back to the commission, hopefully, a project so that we can take the two and interface and allow the quality assurance reporting system that we have to pull both times and the narrative treatment data that we need for our quality assurance process through Dr. Luther and his group. So that group's functioning, they've only had a couple meetings because that's all that's required for that to go and we're just waiting on the implementation of those other two projects to get going. One of the, the big things that we're looking for out of this, this part of the process is, right now, we have such a time lag in getting our quality assurance information because they're on a paper copy. We submit them every three months to, to Dr. Luther and there's a time lag. So it really is difficult to provide, to provide feedback on treatment protocols to the first responders and other providers out in the field. And we want to clear that up so that conceivably, it can be almost real-time or within days of running a call that the EMT or paramedic that's out in the field can receive that feedback from that process. The other thing that that will allow us to do is really pull all the information from the time that the call comes into metro communications to the time that a sheriff's officer, EMT, or a fire first responder gets to the scene and then a EMT transport agency all the way through the medical system. Right now, we just don't have any way to do that because there's no cohesive mix. So the electronic patient care reporting, as I indicated, has only had a couple meetings, but that's only been required and they're still waiting for those other areas. The EMS training, they've had four meetings. As you recall, one of the things that was outlined in the Fitch report was the moving towards an EMR, which is a lower-level provider, before an EMT and before a paramedic. We scheduled one of those classes starting in the, starting just after the first of the year so that our first responders can get some of that training. One of the things that we've seen and here, continue to hear across there is the EMT curriculum is becoming more difficult and our pass/fail rates in South Dakota at the first, at their first testing time is only about 59%. So how do we, how do we use that information and maybe bring this lower-level class in, or not lower level, but different level of class in so that we're still providing what we need to out there? One of the, you know, one of the discussions was is, well, in the sheriff's office, I have 20 EMTs. Would this be a fit for the other deputies that are out there that are maybe not EMTs but still need a certain amount of training? It also gets those, you know, it trains some of those folks that can't, you know, pass the academic requirements at the EMT to another certification level so we still have some sort of comfort that they're providing quality care out there based on a national system. So we're getting to that. One of the things that's, that's coming out of there is depending on what the county wants to do with the other stakeholders, we see as a person becomes an EMT or a, an EMT or an EMR, if we're having those numbers, how do we keep them engaged and keep them continuing their education? So we, do we need to hire or do we need to look at a position that basically manages all of those certifications in the state and then goes out and, so to speak, maybe prods our folks a little more and, hey, your certification's coming up. What can we do to continue to keep you in the system, whether it's through training or some... What can we do to continue to keep you in the system, whether it's through training or some other type of, of method so that we have quality first responders in the future? So we continue to talk about that. And then, once again, how do we provide it? How do we provide through the quality assurance process, real-time results back to the EMS system that we have? So how do we get our, you know, there's nothing worse than going out in a, a field situation, providing care, and then never hearing any feedback from that. You don't know what the outcomes are because, you know, in our community, we've got a large community, along with, you know, HIPAA and all those other things you have to worry about. So you never really find the final outcome unless you know someone that knows someone or some other type of process. So, so once again, through their quality assurance, if we can do that right, and then creating QA rounds where you bring in all the parties to a call, we can get that information back to a first responder or back to a first responder agency through the quality assurance rounds. That's currently, you know, a method that they're seeing great success with here in the city of Sioux Falls and Dr. Luther, and that's, that's where he is today, is looking at some of those specific calls that are out in the county, are out in the system, and then bringing all levels in and saying, this is what we did right. This is what we need training on and everything. And we think that that'll help ensure that we keep some of our EMS folks in the system that just never know at the end what their, what the end result was. So, once again, we talked about retaining folks, and, you know, this was a part of our discussion the other day. You know, workforce issues will continue to be a challenge. So how do we reward those EMTs? How do we reward those folks? You know, there's a lot of things we, that other states do with property tax rebates and, and other values. How do you, how do you keep employers from allowing, or how do you keep employers to see the benefit to the entire system? One of the things we run into there in South Dakota is there's just not statute for it. So an employer, you know, if they allow ten people to go, what's, what's in it for them in this competitive marketplace? One thing that was discussed around the table is, well, is there an ability, at least on the, on both the employer side and on the, the provider side, that, an example that we discussed around is, can we purchase from, say, a facility, gift certificates from that facility that lets people go, provide them to first responders to then revisit the facility that, you know, that let them go? You know, we have some first responders in another world on the fire side, Rosenbauer Fire Apparatus is seeing out in the county side that it's difficult to get firemen also, but he has a niche in the market. So we're working plans where depending on the type of call during the day in the future, he'll just send a fire truck no matter where it is because we have some of those things. But it's employers seeing that value to let the system go, but then also turning it around and reinforcing that to the employers that we appreciate that somehow. How do you do that? And how do you get those? Because all of Minnai County, except for the Sioux Falls, City of Sioux Falls, has great needs for those volunteers and will continue to have great needs in the future. So we continue that working group. We've started a class actually implementing. It's going well. We'll have another meeting after the first of the year when our training gets going and seeing what additional things we can do. The next group is the EMS governance. Once again, within the Fitch study, they included a model ordinance. We looked at that ordinance, and then we looked at our ordinance, and then with the addition of, there's some staff turnover within the SAO office. We've really started, what we've ended up doing is taking the current statute, taking the, the statute or the information that Fitch gave us and really molding them together, but leaning more on, on our current method and outline and everything that goes. The state's attorney's office can answer additional questions with that process on how we're melding them together. But we're taking the good parts out of, out of our current ordinance and the good parts out of the other ordinance, bringing them to the EMS governance group, which has met seven times and has representatives from all groups out in the county, all the stakeholders. And then we hope to have a new ordinance to you pretty quickly. Within your package, you should have saw or at least been able to look at the ordinance, and there's a lot of crossouts, double crossouts, change in color fonts and everything. So it's becoming difficult to read for people that aren't typically ordinance readers, but I think we've got a lot of good information in there. And we hope to have that, that information to you, provided, you should have also had an EMS timeline there. But once again, that's really the, the operation of the EMS system as we see it. One of the things that we continue to talk about is implementing a operational procedure section. And currently, as you know, in most of your ordinances, you know, they're pretty, you know, you have to follow the ordinance, you know, it's, it's just like a law, but it doesn't allow for any much flexibility. So what we'd like to do, what the state does is they put in, they put in administrative rules, and they have administrative rules, and they function like that, and they change them once every year. We really think by adding in an operational procedures so that the Quality Assurance Director and myself and those groups getting together can really make smaller or minor tweaks on operational level stuff, not ordinance stuff, but operationals, to enhance our system so that we wouldn't have to bring it back to the commission every, every single time. So that's something certainly in discussion with that part of the EMS governance group. And like I said, we hope to, we've got the draft ordinance here, and we hope in the next couple of months that we can bring that back to the commission and really have a working group and say, all right, this is what we got in it. Items from the Fitch report, items from our other, from the old ordinance, and then, and then suggestions from the governance group. Let's continue to that, that talk so that we can continue to, so that we can hopefully implement it later on this year, getting ready for the licensing period that'll need to happen late fall, and the new licensing being issued for, starting January twenty nineteen. The last thing that I'll brief on is, last week, we had a, a couple months ago, it seems like, or within the last several months, we had a discussion on what exactly the funding is for the rural ambulance systems. And at that point, you should have seen a, a pie chart of both Humboldt, Del Rapids, and Garrettson, and the parts that the townships, the cities billing, and then the county provides. So we pulled together a group of policymakers last week, Commissioner Bennigan, Barth, myself, Carol Muller. And then we met with representatives from the Brandon Township, Jasper, Humboldt, Palisade Township, Del Rapids, the mayor was there, city council from Baltic. I met individually with Hartford because they couldn't be there, and then Colton also. So we had a good group of policymakers and just discussed, you know, what, what's really impacting the rural ammences and the fact that what we see coming, or what the rural ammences in all EMS transport systems coming, not only them, but healthcare in general, is changes as a result of the Medicaid Medicare reimbursement that they would have. An example with that, of that would be is the EMS transport agencies in our county are considered, they can be considered urban, rural, or super rural. So if you're transported from Del Rapids to Sioux Falls, they can, they can bill that Medicaid Medicare rate or that Medicare rate based on the fact that Del Rapids is considered, I think it's urban. So Del Rapids is an urban county, or an urban community within their system. It's about twenty miles. They provide roughly the same level of service that Beersford does, which is twenty miles south of here. However, Beersford is considered super rural. So the, the net result would be is they both would submit a bill for a thousand dollars. Beersford would be reimbursed a thousand dollars through the current system. Del Rapids may only be reimbursed three hundred and thirty dollars. So it's a huge, it's a huge difference in the reimbursements rates that they get, and therefore, that affects what, what funding that they have to get through other agencies, whether it's the towns, the counties, and, and all those other ones. So, so that's one thing. And, you know, once again, if you're on Medicaid within the state of South Dakota, we saw in the last couple weeks, the governor indicated there would be no adjustment to provider reimbursement. So that amount, that same hun, thousand dollar bill for an ambulance transport out of South Dakota, they're looking at getting paid around a hundred and seventy bucks, and they just don't reimburse that. Well, if your costs are a thousand and your reimbursement is a hundred and seventy, and you have no, no capability to change all those, it makes it difficult to, to fund your system. And that's why we see, you know, we'll continue to see in the Fitch report indicated, you're gonna have to put funds in there. But as those billing items get smaller over no control of our own, how do we fund it in the future? So kind of the things that came out of that working group is, you know, the towns, Del Rapids specifically indicated, well, hey, you know, we could probably pay more if we're asked. Well, the suggestion is made is Del Rapids, you should go ask them. You know, it can't be the, the county shouldn't have to tell you, but you should go ask them and work internally for that. You know, some of the other communities indicated that also. The townships don't have statutory authority even to give to, to rural ammences. It's something that they do, as we understand, under the radar and everything. So Orin Sorenson from their association was gonna bring, or at least agreed to bring that back and say, get permissive authority. Currently in statute, cities and counties have permissive authority to do it. We want to get that same permissive authority for townships. Doesn't require them to do it, but at least you can do it without having a fault of a, of an audit on your, on your financial books at the end of the year. The last thing that indicated is the county would take and try to work with the federal legislators, Senator Rounds and Thune, and Congressperson Noem, and try to look and see, is there any way we can even just change or have reassessed the fact that Beersford's a super rural and Del Rapids is an urban, to try to equalize some of those funding through the Medicaid system and everything? Because it's a huge difference in, in numbers and finances for them. So we continue to work with that. That group really doesn't have a, another, I mean, it was kind of a, an ad hack group, doesn't have a mutual, or a meeting in its forethought or in the future. But we'll meet if we see it needed. And, you know, in my tenure here, we hadn't really brought together, you know, a policy group like that that can make policy level decisions. Are we going on the right side? So that was a good group to bring and forward, and we had some good discussion. So just the other thing that I want to remind you of is in your packet, you should have seen a timeline of the work effort that we see going forward. So we continue the governance meetings. We've already started the EMR training. The SAO office is already working on and, and has the draft, so they're, so we're ahead of schedule for the ordinance writing. We look for sometime, if, if the schedule stays the same, we look for commission action sometime in April, May, maybe that June timeframe. We'll start looking at the budget impacts, if they're, what those are later on after the first of the year, and then input those in based on feedback that we get and everything from this group and the regular budget timeframe. The application period with the new ordinance is currently slated for that June or July and August timeframe. The review's September's, and then award the licenses in October with the new ordinance being fully into effect, once again, in January of nineteen. So the one thing that I didn't include in this timeframe is really that EPCR, the Electronic Patient Care Reporting Group, because we're still, we want to get both the, the county CAD system and the state system up and functioning at a high level before we add another component. And we'll really be the only component in South Dakota like that. So there's a little extra legwork to do for that. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have over the, the working group that's, we've put together.
Thank you, Lynn. Commissioner Heiburger.
Just a couple comments. We did not get a copy of the ordinance, the timeline, or the pie charts. So we don't have any of that.
Okay. I thought they, okay. I know some of that was provided to the commission office, but we'll get it for you. I got it right here. There's no hiding it. So it's ready to go.
Other questions or comments?
I would just say when the Fitch study was implemented or brought back to us, and we set these four working groups up, we asked the communities and the interested parties that are invested in emergency management to participate. And I think in almost all cases, they have participated from day one and attended almost all of the meetings that have been set up and are coming together now with some recommendations, which Lynn has talked about a timeline. It should be completed. Part of this is where the state is going to be and how fast that they can make their conversions. But all the recommendations were to fine tune the system, not to reinvent it, and the Fitch study said the same thing. Is that the system itself is not broken, but it does need some support and some changes. And the groups that have been working on that have done an excellent job, I think, in generally agreeing on how things need to change. The key will always be at the very end and how the funding pieces come together. And all of those individuals that are part of those systems, after talking to each one of them, their heart and soul is in this program, but they understand the changes that need to be made to make it work in the future. Because there, there's just not the volunteers that there were before, and every system operates a little differently than the other one. There are no two that are exactly alike. Some of them are pretty much all volunteer, and some have paraprofessionals, and some have employees. So, and the reimbursement, as Lynn suggested, is completely a mess. So, and we have no control over that. Commissioner Burr?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, you know, it was a bit of a eye opener at that meeting the other day on finance because honestly, I've been following ambulance all these years. And I remember when the townships had quite a disparity between them as far as how much they contributed. And they pretty much are giving a hundred dollars per section now, which at one time, they, you know, one township would give twenty bucks, another township would give thirty-six hundred. Now they're all on the same, but apparently the municipalities have a disparity on how they're funding. And so you get, you know, a, a city of a thousand people like Garrettson giving thirty thousand dollars, and another community may be giving, you know, much less per capita. But, so the county is not alone on the funding issue either here, and it appears that the townships are, are, are fully vested in it. And to Lynn's point about them changing their, by state law, they're not allowed to make donations. And so what would happen is some softball team would ask for a donation, and they'd give them fifty bucks, or, this is not that kind of a donation. This is public safety, and I think, you know, the law needs to be changed to allow them to legally make that kind of a contribution. But it appears that there might be some room with the rural, more rural communities to increase their share in this.
Other questions or comments?
If I could just echo what Commissioner Bennigan, our chairperson Bennigan, indicated, you know, workforce really is gonna be the driving issue of this as we go forward. You know, not just in the rural areas, but it's difficult, you know, even internally, paid-for-profit services for that workforce issue. And, you know, even though we'll, we'll put into place a, you know, a revised ordinance, you know, with it, input from all the stakeholders out there. But as we go, there are outside influences affecting our system that we just don't have any control over. You know, Medicaid Medicare reimbursements, like we talked about, is one of them. And when the funding from other areas goes south, you know, how do we continue to provide this service to our community that everyone says we need? So. So Commissioners, we'll get the information to you. It was, like I said, I wasn't, I didn't know it wasn't provided within the packets, so I'll go make those. And if, we'll continue to answer questions if you have any, and start providing that a little more feedback as we go because this'll tighten up and we'll get some of those other things out of there that we don't need and get ready for a, a busy EMS workload, I guess, in the spring and, and early summer. So.
Thank you, Lynn. If there's no other questions, we'll go to item fifteen, which is to authorize the chair to sign a twenty eighteen contract between the county and the Sioux Falls Area Humane Society. Good morning, Craig.
Good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office. The process of renewing these contracts earlier in the month, as well as the ones you'll hear today, has been quite the learning experience for me in terms of understanding better how the county operates. So the first contract that you're looking at right now is the contract for animal control for the year twenty eighteen. It runs a calendar year, January one to December thirty-first next year. And the total amount of this contract is forty-seven thousand dollars. That reflects an identical amount to what you saw in twenty seventeen. The twenty seventeen budget right now is well under that contract limit, so there wasn't any foreseeable reason to increase that amount. The contract is broken down under a couple of provisions. One- One are 12 monthly payments, and that comprises the majority of the contract, roughly $3,000. It's actually $3,003 in monthly installments, so that adds up to approximately $36,000. The remaining contract amount is to cover billing for different after hours calls. And that rate is billed at $56 an hour, and you'll see that mentioned in the memo at the top, as well as in the contract. A little lower down, there's a reference to $54 an hour. That should read $56 an hour for the sake of consistency. So the Humane Society is on call 24 hours a day to provide these services seven days a week, except for unlimited number of holidays, such as Christmas Day and New Year's Day that's coming up. This contract has a provision that says, once 80% of the value of the contract has been expended, that the Humane Society will work with the county to determine if a budget supplement would be needed. As is the case for this year, that wasn't needed since the contract is running well under for 2017. But again, total value is for $47,000. And those additional expenses, in addition to the monthly installments and the after hours response calls are for the mileage that would be required for, to pick that up. To that end, though, would be happy to answer any additional questions that you have.
Thank you. Commissioner Bender?
So just as a point of clarification, when you say the expenses are running significantly under, the expenses that we're talking about is that $56 per call and any mileage? Is that the, are those the expenses you're referencing?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the contract with the Sioux Falls Area Humane Society. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item 16 is to authorize the chair to sign an agreement between the county and Southeastern Behavioral for Mobile Crisis Team Services.
Yes, this is the 2018 contract for the Mobile Crisis Team. And again, this is another calendar year contract that runs from January 1 through December 31st. This contract amount for 2018 again is the same as 2017. And Southeastern Behavioral Healthcare is paid a $5,000 administrative fee for management of the program. That's broken down into 12 installments, each one for each month, which amounts to And then Minnehaw County is also responsible for paying the cost of the on-call as needed mental health professionals that are providing these intervention services. And the standard rate is $25 an hour. However, in the case where the professional is entitled to overtime, that would increase to time and a half, so you'd see $37.50 for that overtime. Additionally, there are on-call periods that these professionals do provide, and in working with the state's attorney's office, we worked out language that would indicate that there's going to be a flat rate of $100 per 24-hour on-call period. If the on-call period happens to be less than 24 hours, then it will be $50 for an on-call period that's less than 24 hours. And then the last item that would contribute to expenses related to the Mobile Crisis Team is reimbursement for mileage that's incurred during the hours billed. Would be happy to answer any other questions that you have about this one as well.
Thank you. Any questions for Craig? Commissioner Heiburger?
A comment. I believe this is a program we started about six years ago. And when we started it, we just, it was a couple of days a week just to see how it worked. And eventually, we extended the time to full time, and it has been a very successful program in trying to reach these people before they end up in emergency rooms and in jail. So I think it's been very successful. And with that, I would support this program with a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the agreement with Southeastern Behavioral Health for Mobile Crisis Team Services. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item 17 is liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports this morning? Any new business? Any old business? With that, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for litigation and contracts.
That's my motion.
Second.
Motion and a second to go into exec session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. We need about five minutes or so before we can come back.